Good evening. This is a continuation of the October 27th Board of Education meeting. The board has been in closed session for negotiations and approval of September 29th, October 6th, October 13th, closed session minutes. Could we rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have seven board members present, non-absent. Okay, I need a motion for Board of Education officers.
I move that the Board of Education accepts the resignation of James Collins from the office of President of the Board of Education and declares a vacancy in the office of President.
I second that motion.
Okay, moved by Karen, seconded by Emily. Any discussion?
I just want to publicly thank Jim for serving in that role as President. Seven people, it's difficult to keep people together in alignment. I appreciate your willingness to make sure everyone had a voice at the table and your willingness to attend multiple meetings and do all the other things that the Board President role requires. So again, I just want to thank you for your time in that role and appreciate your continued support as we continue to move forward in our Board of Education.
I realize everyone reads the, all the minutes from the Board of Education and everybody's watching the video every week and since we have the largest audience here we've had in a while, let me just explain what's going on. Last May, when we normally elect officers, Shannon and I agreed that because we were in the middle of hiring a new superintendent and because superintendents like stability, I would remain on as President for about six months and then I would resign and Shannon would take over as President. So that is what is going on here. There's no headlines, this is all agreed to, and this is the third time I've said it, but...
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, seven ayes, no nays, that motion passes. Next motion.
I move that the Board of Education elects Vice President Shannon Ebner to become the President of the Board of Education for the remainder of the current President's term, which ends with a reorganization meeting in the spring of 2016 and declares a vacancy in the office of Vice President.
I second that motion.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Emily, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Last motion.
I move that the Board of Education elect James, Jim Collins, to serve as Vice President for the remainder of the current Vice President's term of office, which ends with a Board reorganization meeting in the spring of 2016.
I second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Emily, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion passes. Okay, next on the agenda.
It moved quicker than I could raise my hand.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, you've been an extremely fair leader of the Board, extremely passionate advocate for the kids in Elmhurst and a great friend, and I appreciate all your service as President.
Okay, moving to public comments. Are there any public comments? Okay, hearing none. Move on to approval of board meeting minutes. We have three sets of minutes, September 29th, October 6th, and October 13th. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Okay, the minutes will stand as presented. Moving to the superintendent's agenda, the consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Do you have something, John?
No.
Okay, okay, yeah, so we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we accept and approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A through N.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Moved by John, seconded by Karen. We need a roll call.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Bestido?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion passes. Okay, moving along. Superintendent's agenda action items. We have one donation. Go ahead.
I move that the Board of Education approve the donation from the Emerson School PTA for a new playground in the amount not to exceed $22,000. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Moved by Karen, seconded by Jim. Any discussion?
I wanted to thank the Emerson PTA community and all of the staff at Emerson for this wonderful donation for our school and our children. It's a substantial amount of fundraising money and the kids are going to enjoy the playground and so we thank everyone for their contribution.
Okay, we need a roll call vote.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Ms. Bestido?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion passes. Okay, superintendent agenda, excuse me, superintendent's communication.
Okay, we received three Freedom of Information requests. The first, one requesting information regarding collective bargaining agreements and staff, this was granted, one requesting financial information, this was granted, one requesting information regarding a specific construction project, and that was also granted. The second item is required by state law, the school district library grant program, there is a requirement that in order to accept the money, which isn't a large amount of money, but in order to accept the money you have to agendize it and make it part of your public meeting. And so the library grant is an entitlement grant the district is eligible for based upon our student enrollment as of December, or, excuse me, September 30, 2015. We will receive approximately $6,000 from this grant, which is, which will be used for books, audiovisual materials, and/or electronic resources. As part of the grant application, the Board is required to review the school library media program utilizing the Linking for Learning Illinois School Library Program guidelines. The grant application and the Linking for Learning booklet are on file in the Learning and Teaching Office and can be reviewed from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM on normal workdays. So that is it for me tonight.
Okay, we're moving on to board communications. Any board members like to present? Go ahead.
Yes, I wanted to bring up the whole topic of stormwater. I'm interested in the stormwater representatives, which is Shannon and myself, getting some direction from the Board regarding one particular item, and that is the further participation at this point, in this phase, in the regular stormwater meetings that were, that are being conducted by the city on a regular basis. The format of these things has been that the stormwater committee goes, a couple people from the Park District, or, I'm sorry, a couple board members from the Park District along with their executive director, we just send two board members, the mayor, city manager, a couple aldermen, and it goes anywhere from two to three hours, and it is formatted such that the two government bodies other than the city are heard sequentially and basically whoever goes second has to sit there while the first one is having their discussions. It's kind of an impractical format, I think, and I just wanted to know if this is something that we might continue on. Just a little bit of how it went. I know some people read the comments by the mayor indicating that he believed credit for closing the Madison School deal was attributable to his decision to hold public meetings. And I do agree with him in the sense that that first public meeting was the first meeting in four months that had been called. And so, yes, there was progress because there hadn't been a meeting in four months. But I disagree that the public format of the meetings was in some way responsible for bringing the parties closer to a resolution. First of all, the group is simply a communications committee and that's what it does. They simply communicate to the public, the negotiations, the discussions, and the all-important drafting of the language of the agreement, it happened elsewhere, done by the attorneys away from the public session. When the mayor authorized the city's attorneys to meet with the school district attorneys, that's when the Madison agreement started to come together, the language started to be refined, that's when the gap started. Much of these meetings were spent echoing what the lawyers had already discussed elsewhere, and I'm not sure it did little to help the lawyers close the deal, but instead raised ambiguities and issues that some of the lawyers had thought closed. The basic concepts of the agreement really never changed during the course of them, the terminability, liability, safety, costs and risks of the city, the primary purpose of the land being education, those fundamental business and policy issues didn't change during these meetings. It was basically the same deal we discussed in our September 2014 resolution, the same deal we outlined in our October committee, the whole meeting, the same deal that was in our May 21st draft. The language was refined. So what it did provide is it did provide public communication, and I want to be clear there, the communication with the public on this issue is very important. And I said this before and I'll say it again, these are our families and their basements are filling up with water because of what appears to be a stormwater system that is undersized and needs strong remedial projects. And they expect their school district to be responsive to the Stormwater Authority, the city of Elmhurst, in its requests to transfer the use of assets to address this problem. They have every right, those families, to expect us to consider those proposals, and we need to listen to them. But at the same time, they were delivering their views to only two members of this board, and we are a board of seven. We meet together as a group of seven and we receive public comment as a board of seven. I think our public engagement needs to be a little more balanced than these stormwater meetings are, both in terms of attendance by the board and attendance by the people here. We meet here on a regular basis as a group, we consider all positions on things, we consider all views in balance with each other, in countering each other. We balance the equities and we make decisions of what we think is best for all the kids of the district. And I'm suggesting that, for the time being, that that public communication function be transferred here to the regular school board meetings. If there is a need, we could restore attendance at those things, but I'm just not sure that that's necessary at this time. So given where we are in the Madison project, it's about to be signed, the city approved it, given where we are in the Brian Gravel Lot, which is, it is so early in the process, the agreement just arrived, and given the acknowledgement that the, any public consideration of a project for York is very premature, I guess what I'm asking is I'm looking for some direction to the Stormwater Committee about our participation in these public sessions. And I just want to hear what different people have to say.
Go ahead, Emily.
And I know, I think there was some value, I'm not saying that those meetings, that I agree with the statement, that those meetings were the reason that we were able to get to an agreement on Madison, but I do see value in them. Like you said, I know that to the community that considers themselves kind of the, not just the flutters, but people who see flooding as a problem in Elmhurst, I know that they really value these meetings, and online, if you are on social media, they are talked about a lot, they are closely followed, that is the way they can see their parks, city, and schools discussing an issue that's very important to them. So I really do place a lot of value in that aspect of it. And just, quite frankly, I think for the school to be invited to a meeting by the city and the parks and to say, "No, we're not showing up," I really am not comfortable with that. And so I'm weighing in and saying, as long as they are having those meetings and we're invited, I really feel strongly about going, so much so that one time when we all had obligations and nobody could go, I skipped or left early from curriculum night so that I could be there because I felt so strongly that us just not showing up was just really bad for them and was not serving the community the way that we all committed to serving the community. So I think we can, though, have a discussion with the city because I thought they were in the same agreement, I thought we came to an agreement that this next phase, that the Brian discussion, was going to take place differently, and it was, and I thought that, and I still think that the city agreed to that and we agreed to that, that it was our superintendent and the city manager, because we were able to hammer through so many issues with the Madison deal that a lot of those same issues, you know, would carry forward to the Brian agreement and that there wouldn't need to be the same amount of discussion and lawyering and that at first it would be the superintendent and the city manager hammering that out. So I feel like if we do want to maybe move forward that way, we can have a discussion with the city and say, "Okay, you guys agreed, we agreed, this is how we're going to move forward." It's not the same way that we did Madison in these public forums and then in between all the attorneys meeting and then going back to the public forum and then attorneys meeting. So I think we can agree with them that that's the way to move forward, but I think we need to agree with them on that. I really am not comfortable with us just saying, "No, we're not showing up at these meetings anymore."
I as well attended a couple of those meetings, and here's the point we're at today. We have a Madison agreement. The idea of the Madison agreement is that we learn something. Without that project being built, what are we going to learn about the Brian project to make that intergovernmental agreement any different to serve the needs of the schools and the needs of the communities better? So it seems like there's not a lot to talk about. The city as well, I mean, we store our maintenance trucks and we service our maintenance trucks on that lot. We need a new place for them. The city has a building to build for us to occupy with our maintenance trucks. So there is a long time span here before they're ready for us to move into a maintenance garage and we're ready to ink an agreement. We can't do it before that maintenance garage is done. So there is a long leeway here between getting Madison built, seeing how it operates, getting a garage built on the city site, and we have to get an agreement, then we can start an agreement that negotiates the use of the lot versus the use of the garage. I see there's no real useful reason for us to be going to those meetings for a while. Let's wait until there's a real purpose because why should we ask Shannon and John to, every other Thursday night, show up at that for somebody to bring up issues that we're not prepared to discuss? So I say we wait a while, and when the time is right to come back, we come back. And we can be respectful and just let the city know what our plans are.
So hearing both conversations, I understand the time commitment that it takes and the question on whether or not there is sufficient information to move forward on. I also appreciate Emily's position in the sense that if you're invited to a meeting, you should go to the meeting and have a discussion. I appreciate the fact that having a conversation, keeping a conversation going, it's a lot easier than stopping a conversation and then restarting it. So I can appreciate the fact that stopping this conversation and then trying to restart it, it's going to take a certain amount of momentum to get that going forward. A proposal could be, you know, can we back off these meetings? Can we back off these meetings and having a conversation with the city, and I think we also should have that conversation with the Park District? Can we back off these meetings until we feel like there's something, an agreement, that we can move forward and have a discussion on? So does that mean immediately stopping it? No. Does that mean perhaps making those meetings once a month instead of every other Thursday? That may be an option. And then making sure we understand what we're going to talk about in that meeting.
Yeah, so my suggestion was just to reconfirm what our original agreement was, is that there's some, you know, now there's no new business, and that if they would like us to show up periodically, whether it be once a month or whatever the span is, so that we can continue the relationship and not restart, that we get that timeframe. I guess that's what I would suggest.
I thought we were under the agreement that we would start the conversation about Brian right away. I mean, I'm just one voice, but I'm ready to continue or start the Brian conversation. Is everyone else wanting to wait?
The conversation is ongoing, so nothing, if we don't go to the public meetings, the work is happening. It's happening behind the scenes with our superintendent, so the work is going as quickly as it can. Nothing has stopped if we don't go to the meetings. And we have asked to have meetings when they make sense to have meetings, and we have agreement from the mayor, yeah, I, we should have meetings when we makes, when it makes sense to, when there's something to report. But they still continue to schedule these with the Park District every two weeks, and right now we don't have anything to talk about on Thursday. So it doesn't make sense to go Thursday, but I understand what you're saying.
The purpose of the meeting is communicating with the public. There's an open public comment section that looks just like ours. People come up, they talk for three minutes, there's no response, direct response, and then the conversation happens among the people in the... In this case, I think the public information that we would provide would be simply this, that the agreement, a draft agreement in a very rudimentary form, was received last week, was forwarded to administration and the Stormwater Committee, or was it forwarded to the whole board? Okay, and I apologize, my preparation of, for this meeting did not allow me to review the agreement. That being said, I don't know that even if I had read it tonight, I would have any input from any of you, so all I would really be doing would be to show up to say, "We received the agreement, we will read it, we'll get back to you shortly." Just so you know, when we were meeting before the public meetings happened, we would get an agreement and then we'd schedule the next, or, I'm sorry, we'd have a meeting and then we'd schedule the next meeting based on the status of the agreement. In fact, the meetings were called based on the need, not by the regular schedule. The two-week session was, every two weeks was the city's creation, thinking that it would get the district in some way moving faster when, in fact, at the point that they were called, it was still in the city's court. That's neither here nor there. But I think that the purpose of the meeting is public communication, and I think that the need for an every-two-week appearance and sit through the Park District is a little unreasonable expectation. I think there are other ways that we can deliver this public communication effectively and receive communication more effectively.
With the meeting on Thursday, I believe that the reason the draft agreement, which was based on the Madison agreement in large part, was sent on Friday was because they wanted to have that document received by us in conjunction with the timeline of the upcoming meeting. That does not give the Board, it does not give the attorneys, it does not give us a lot of time to actually scrutinize the contents of the agreement. But that being said, our attorney has looked over the agreement, I have talked with Frank Schu to understand our maintenance needs, we have deliberated some potential options that we wanted to make sure were kosher with the attorney so that we weren't just shooting in the dark and brainstorming with no direction. We think we have a plan of attack that I will share with the Board as soon as there is something to share, but we need, we have a, I was on the phone with the attorney for half an hour today, I have a meeting with city representatives and a conference call with both attorneys tomorrow, and I don't really think that there will be anything that you can share on Thursday, but I have made a commitment with the city, based on the authority I believe I was given, which is that the Board is open to the Gravel Lot discussions, and my goal is to expedite that process so that we don't have to talk about stormwater and we can talk about education. And so, you know, my intent is to move through that process as quickly as is humanly possible, and I'm going to make every attempt to do that. Now, obviously, we're going to have to get an agreement that works for the district, and so however complex that process becomes, we don't know yet because it's only three working days old, but I believe, I was, you all dedicate a lot of time to the school district, and I know we need to be sensitive to public relations, but I believe that there are more efficient ways for us to work with the city to get to the outcome that we're all looking for than for you to have to sit at meetings when you don't have any information that you can share anyway. So that's just my perspective on it. As long as the topic came up in public, I wanted the Board to know where we were at in the process, and the process has begun, and there will be more information tomorrow, and once I get through that meeting, I will actually have something I can report to you of more substance.
Yeah, Dr. Moore, I also want to caution you about how much time you spend on that subject. The Board, the community hired you to focus on the education of the 8,500 kids that we are mandated. are mandated to educate, and it is, it's the city's job, it's the city's mandate, to worry about stormwater. I am just concerned about how much of your personal time stormwater is going to take. So I, with that said, I just want to, I just think the board should think about how much we're straddling our administration, particularly our chief executive officer, with the response of the time responsibility, and something that we didn't hire him to do.
I mean, I agree, I don't want Dr. Moore spending all his time on that, but I heard him come into the first meeting with a fresh perspective, totally infuriated, even though you don't think that's a word, John, it's a word, by the amount of time we were spending at the board meetings talking about it. And I, if I remember correctly, it was your idea, you thought you could do this a lot faster. I mean, please, at any time, if you think this is not the best route.
I thought I said infuriated at cabinet, behind closed doors. How did that get out of cabinet? I, do I have a mole in the room? I don't know. No, I'm sorry, I'm just kidding.
So, anyway, at any time, if you don't think that's the best route. I seem to remember you agreeing to, but yes, no, I agree with Jim. Obviously, we don't want you spending a ton of your personal time on it.
I'm happy to do it. I think this, I'm happy to do it. I do consider part of my responsibility, and I'm happy to do it. You know, I don't want to spend any more time on it than I have to, but I'm not trying to duck out of the, you know, my responsibility to try to help get that done.
Okay, so I'll say bottom line, I think we're at the same place we were last time we talked, which is that Dr. Moore is going to be working with the business city manager, and that if it takes more time, then you will, you will update us. There's also some work that is done from us elected officials, working with elected officials, and we will take that responsibility. So I think in summary, we are still at the same place that we were last time, but it's great discussion now that we've closed Madison and moving forward for us to have this discussion, not only amongst ourselves and in the district, but for our community, because we do, we do value our community. We also have to steward education.
I don't believe we've answered John's question.
That's my question. So what's the consensus for Thursday night? So I say it's not a good use of our time, and I've already talked to the mayor about this, and he understands that, you know, there's nothing to say. So we need consensus for Thursday night.
Can I offer a suggestion? Why don't we agree to send one board member on some, on some periodic basis? Right now, it sounds like once every two months is the frequency at which we need to send somebody. Maybe in the future, that is more frequent than that. And that board member is, shows up, briefs the public on where we're at since the last time a Board of Education member was there, and that's it. I mean, they're not there to negotiate.
I was just kidding. I was about to say, I know, then you took a second to remember what happened last, and I went to the meeting, and you probably tuned your mind, but yes.
So consensus for Thursday night, yes or no?
I move Emily attends.
Karen, for Thursday night?
We can have a one board member go. I don't think that we need two, especially if we don't have an update.
Okay. So the consensus is have a one representative?
So you've had a conversation with the city, and they, I mean, this is not us not showing up, and there an empty chair there and a microphone saying, "Well, the schools did not show up tonight." I mean, you've had a conversation with them. We are further ahead than the Park District, so they understand that there's still movement going on, we're still committed to it, and that we're just not there because, what, the parks still hasn't reached their agreement, and we're ahead of their.
Okay, go ahead. We need to wrap this up.
If I could suggest, we send one board member. We have an update of the public, what's happening, and try to avoid the duplicative discussion of issues that are being dealt with in another context elsewhere, in the professional context elsewhere, with administration of both bodies, which is where these things usually get resolved. So maybe if we could suggest to the city, a short update, I'll go deliver it, ask the city if we could be advanced, because we're done. We don't have anything really pending except an update, whereas the Park District, they are going deep in issues, so that they alter the format to have school board update, and we put in this update that our proposal is that the participation in them be a little bit relaxed for the time being, with the possibility that it will intensify later as there's more news to report. But in the absence of news every two weeks doesn't make sense.
Okay, that's good. So we'll go first for that meeting, hopefully. Okay. Thanks. All right, moving on. I need glasses. Okay, upcoming meetings. November 10th, Board of Education meeting. November 16th, Learning and Teaching Committee meeting. November 24th, Board of Education meeting. December 8th, Finance and Operations Committee meeting. November 24th is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving. I think in the past, we, isn't that also teacher conferences?
It is.
In the past, I think we canceled that one if we've been able, if there wasn't a lot on the agenda, I'm just.
We've had it on the calendar, and then sometimes we cancel the meeting, so we can.
Why don't we just wait till November 10th and decide if we have enough things to put on agenda November 24th?
Well, we would just, I would just state that I would need to talk with Chris Welton, because the big thing on the second meeting would be approving the bills, you know? And so, we would have to make contingency plans if we cancel that meeting to make sure that whatever he needs to do is covered. Other than that, I don't know what the agenda would potentially look like, but we could probably, I would say, construct our agenda so that between the first meeting in November and the December meeting, provided that's taken care of, we should be able to massage that, if that's what your interest is.
Is there anything else? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.